Good evening, this is the July 27, 2021 regular meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission of New Canaan, Connecticut. It felt strange doing this from home, but now it actually feels a little bit strange doing it from here. Lynn, can you tell everyone via Zoom and also in the auditorium how you're going around the meeting, please?
So it's now kind of hybrid fashion, so we have a portion of the person and a portion on the regular person who will run the call. And everyone needs to speak their own person, as well as them back to you. If you want us to, if you just raise your hand, make it orderly.
That's pretty poor audio. It's going to be hard for all of us to hear everything.
The same will be true with those on for the public hearing. Attendees will also be required to.
I think maybe the message there is just everybody needs to speak a little louder.
Lynn, do you need to be near this soon?
No, I'm all around the room, but the audio, part of the audio, I think, is on, so.
Okay, John, we can hear you well, but Lynn is a little hard to hear.
Okay, Lynn, when we get to you, you'll just need to, Lynn's soft spoken, we know that, we'll need you to talk a little bit. Okay, let's do the roll call. John Gugu and I am here, John Chris.
Here.
Kristin Nielsen.
Here.
Dan Radman.
Here.
Claire Dischornian.
Yeah.
Ken Turner.
Here.
Dick Ward.
Here.
Phil Williams is absent tonight, Arthur Cassavant.
Here.
James Bash.
Here.
I think I do see Chris. Chris has joined us?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay. Mr. Harry, you are seated for Mr. Williams. If anyone had an old agenda, the executive session was canceled for this month. And on the regular meeting agenda, 365 Brooks Wood Road will not be discussed tonight, it will be discussed in August. Let's get going with the meeting, 114 Rital Path Lane, upon application, Michelle and Michael Viverdo, owners for special permit approval of Sections 3, 4, C3, and 7, to allow construction of a detached accessory residential structure approximately 1,800 square feet, a 2-acre zone at 114 Rital Path Lane. Sit through this, please.
Hi, I'm Leander Kruger. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Leander Kruger, under associate in the New Canaan office of Menlo Art and Steel Architecture. Principal Amanda is also present at the speaking pack. We're here on behalf of Michelle and Michael Viverdo, who live at 114 Rital Path Lane, here in a fine construction unit, with frame 1,800 square foot detached accessory residential structure to west of their existing main level. Michelle and Michael have lived at 114 Rital Path Lane for eight years, and are long-term residents of their own house. I guess if we can move this as the survey, if we can move one more to the next one. We've provided drawings to show that the proposed accessory structure will comply with all height, yard, setback requirements for a principal structure into the dump, and all in the weapons, health department, sanitation restrictions, and requirements. As a general description of the project, the structure we are proposing consists of a one-car garage, a kitchen, living space, two bathrooms, two bedrooms. This cottage will be used by Michael's elder-in-law parents, one of whom has physical limitations that require her to use a walk or a wheelchair. Yes, maybe if we go to the next image, which is our site plan shown for the proposed project. And so the entire upper level of the proposed structure will be a wheelchair accessible, and the small upstairs bedroom and bathroom intended for a guest's storage or living. The proposed structure will replace the existing 1,800 square foot wood-framed shed, which will be relocated to the east side of the property and use only storage and storage spots. With those guys.
Excuse me, this is Dick Ward. The audio is not very good, and if you're showing pictures, we can't see them. Maybe Lynn, can you put them up?
I will need to write them down.
And commissioners on Zoom, John Goodman speaking. You should also have emails today, I know you want to look at specifically what the speaker's looking at, so I get that, but you should also have the emails of all the applications.
Okay.
This will motivate you to come back for Long Beach Island.
The proposed cottage, is that better? You can hear me now, hopefully. The proposed cottage will sit in nicely with the worded character of Rital Path Lane. The perimeter of the Delverto property is very densely landscaged with mature evergreen and deciduous trees. The new structure will be minimally visible from cars, from cars and pedestrians on the street, and only when passed by or directly in front of the Delverto's driveway, excuse me. Like the existing main dwelling, the new cottage should be wood-framed with gable roof. And now if we move forward, you can move up a little bit on the drawings. One more. You'll see these are elevations of the small cottage. The proposed, excuse me, like the existing main dwelling, the new cottage, wood-framed and gable roof. The existing main dwelling facade will post a white clapper with black shutters. The proposed new structure will be clad in six-inch chipclap made-back or similar wood siding, installed horizontally along a gray male standing ceiling roof. The new dark gray siding, similar to the dark gray painted garage and shed that were replacing, will blend in with the tall shade twisted north and west of the site and will complement the color and style of the new building. Obviously, I will show you photographs that extend to the left. Our covered porch runs along the side of the new cottage and provides shelter in the entrance to the living space. This porch wraps around the rear of the cottage and helps diminish the vertical scale of the house. Our proposed construction at 114 Rital Path Lane will include the addition of a pool, a stone patio with the basement level of the main house, which is called the lower patio, and some. Yes, let's go back to the site plan. Thank you very much. You'll see on the left-hand side is the proposed accessory structure, right there. And then just behind the house, we are the main dwelling. We're replacing an existing elevated stone patio with a new stone patio. We're also replacing an existing stone patio at the lower level of the house, which is the far right. There's kind of a small box to the far right. And if there's an existing patio there which we're replacing, we're going to join the two patios with a staircase. And then at the far right is this swimming pool which we're adding. Much as you'll see, again, in the photos going on, you'll see that the pool is actually nestled into the property, into the building very well in a way, but it's hidden from all of the neighbors. I'll show that itself. So again, you have a lower patio and an upper patio, joined by a new stone path staircase. Since the elevated first floor of the main house and the upper patio are currently inaccessible, we've incorporated ramps from the new accessory structure and the driveway there. The upper patio will also create new covered pergola and gas fireplace. Two existing retaining walls at the southeast corner of the main house will be replaced with the new construction. We believe that this new accessory structure will only have positive effects on the Delverto's 3-inch property and the neighborhood at large. In fact, the proposed new structure fits within the goals of the 2014 conservation development plan in that it creates an independent living unit which is accessible and senior-friendly, thereby helping the town to increase the willingness to rent housing. We also believe that moving forward post-COVID, young families will look very friendly to our homes that incorporate space for elderly parents to age. Thank you for your attention to our application. Now I'll just flip through the photos a little bit, so I can. Okay, if you'll move forward to the floor plan of the cottage, which I believe is A100. These are the two floor plans. In the upper left corner there is a double-height atrium space. Again, the lower floor of this building is completely inaccessible. The ramping and the entryways into the house, the outdoor and indoor, the interior spaces are all of the same level. The huts, closets, etc. are accessible. And on the right-hand side, you see that upstairs, there is a quite small bedroom and bath and closet, again, for a care of the lower over the dust. And you see that the porch surrounds and shapes the building as the ones you said earlier, it also helps to the portions of the building. Then if we move forward a little bit, let's go to the next. But it's just a roof plan, again, it's a standing ceiling roof. We're using a pack-clad material which actually is inserted, what they call it, a cool color, and then it reflects light in the way that it is not sort of deep, and it produces the energy used up at the house's level. New floor again. These are sections, you can see that it's a kind of double-height atrium space on the right-hand side of top crime, and on the left-hand side of the lower crime. Okay, if you can move it a little bit. And then sections cut lots of direction, especially show you the staircase and small quantity of balcony that works out with the atrium, and the very small bedroom upstairs there. Move next. This is a, these are drawings that kind of cut along the backyard of the house, that show the terracing and the retaining walls, some of which are retained walls that are existing, and we're just replacing them, you know, in one case, like four feet, four feet. And you see in the lower inch there, that's if you look in the west when you're at the pool area, seeing that retaining wall, again, that big retaining wall is basically there, but it's set further west from the middle area. And that's the view from the pool. And we move forward a little bit. This is an elevation that just comes across the whole back of the property. That gives you a better idea of the scale of the structure of the building, which is on the right-hand side. And in the lower, the lower drawing, you're looking across the garden, again, with the small structure back there. And to the left where the arrow is, is obviously the existing main covered roof. Please move forward, thank you. We are adding some exterior light fixtures, and so part of this plan, I can say that almost half the fixtures that are shown here as little red dots are actually existing light fixtures. And I would say pretty much every light fixture here is going to be blocked by hillside or definitely densely packed trees. In most cases, they are very small fixtures, you know, just to light a tree above or a really mostly packed roof. Especially the ramps, you can see over on the left-hand side, to the right of the access road, you see the ramps that we were discussing, that allow access to the house, which is currently not easily accessible. Can you please move forward? And these are drawings from a core engineering, who have done all the work on the subject systems in this range. We are, this is a weathering area in the back as well. We are replacing one existing detention system with two new detention systems, and we should work very well. I can move forward a little bit more, thank you. I think we're going to move to the photos now. So this is a view from the road. The main house on the right-hand side, on the left, you see that 1,800 square foot garage slash shed, which will be relocated to another location on the study. And the accessory building we're proposing is going to go in that location. One thing I mentioned, which is the window then, is that the front yard, the street side of this property is very densely forested, really blocked by large evergreen trees. So you really only see the house when you're passing in front of the driveway. Can you move forward? This is a panorama of sorts, showing the backyard and the expanse of it, and it's about three acres. On the left-hand side there, where you see this stacked stone wall, that's where the pool will be. There's actually a terrace there that we're replacing. And then that upper terrace, which you can see at the fireplace, you see that there's a stone wall there. Currently, the retaining wall ends at the edge of the fireplace. We're moving those retaining walls out to the, we're treating this, so a little bit to the left, about, so, 7 feet. Continue. This is just a view of the existing shed from the terrace. And we chose this photo because, of course, it shows the densely packed trees in the back, and also because it's a winter shot, so we can understand that in the summer, it was very difficult to view of the structure from any neighbor or from any other. Please continue. This is where the pool will be going, there's an existing stacked stone wall, we're going to take a bunch of those rocks and then use them. And if you scroll up a tiny bit, we'll just see, again, is the evergreens in this area will, and also the elevation of the pool, will block neighbors from being able to see it. Please continue to that side. Again, showing the pool area, there may be two new stairs that kind of go through that existing stacked stone wall that provide access from the driveway a little more easily. But if you look beyond these stacked stone walls, you see those are the evergreens back there that are on Rital Path Lane, that walk the road. And this last one, again, is looking from the point where if you're staying part of a new accessory building, looking back towards the road. Again, you see that the amount of time where people will be able to view a structure while they pass on the street is quite limited. It's just that it's the end of the day. And I think that's it. To the beach this time. A great one. Sorry, these are material choices, just while we're there. It is, again, a large indoor building that has a gunmetal dark gray finish, a dark gray either made back or hard to paint. And the, on the right-hand side is the pack-clad, the main roof there. And then if we can go back to the grade plan, which is almost, I think it's maybe the fourth, I want to think. Which just shows our grade plan calculations and how we, you are doing some grading on the site. It is a site that has a lot of natural contours to begin with, and it naturally turns down into the weathering area. This is it. If it gives you an idea, please scroll to the left a little bit. The, the house can sit on a flat, it's a pretty flat plane, but off to the left and to the far side of the top, it turns off down into the weathering area. You'll see, so to the right are the ramps and the access point to the house from the driveway and the accessory dwelling. And all of the grading is slowly, slowly, so that it goes in well, and it will not have any negative effect on the system area. That's it, and that's it. Any other questions now? And welcome.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
This is Dan Radman. The new accessory structure will have its own new set system, is that right?
That's it.
And then the existing shed, how large is the existing shed that is being relocated?
So it's 1,800 square feet. And it is going to be relocated to, if we go back to the site plan, which is, I think, this, John. If you go over to the far right, you'll see, the far right where this gray rectangle is, that's the location, the new location. It is, again, the dense wooded areas between all of the overs provide a lot of coverage, so we don't feel as though this will impact anyone. It's just going to be used for garden supplies. It does have a light fixture on it, it won't have a plumbing or.
As you say, the existing shed is 1,800 square feet?
Eighteen.
Sure about that?
Is my math wrong?
Seems very large for what I'm seeing in the pictures.
Mm-hmm.
What doesn't, and what doesn't reconcile is have the existing, on the existing site plan, the pad size of the existing shed, which looks to be like 12 by 24, maybe.
More like.
Location. So I'm just wondering if that new pad size is, is that the actual shed, or is that gravel, or? Just trying to reconcile the coverage.
Yeah, no, that's a very good question. Why, why, I don't have, it doesn't seem to be closer to about 250 square.
That's okay.
Yes, so I apologize for that.
Dan, it's Kim Turner. It looks more like about 250 square feet.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So with that in mind, the new pad area that you're showing of 16 by 30, which is 450 square feet, is that right? Or, is that going to get smaller based on that revised calculation?
The time will be whatever the size of, you mean, when we relocate the shed.
Right, meaning the new area that you're calling out for.
It will be put down on gravel, and it will size a little bit up.
So, okay, so it will be amended.
And there's no concrete there, it's just on gravel.
And then the new square footage of 1,800 square feet, is that the square footage of the new accessory structure alone?
Yes, that is the new accessory structure alone. But, yeah, not the footprint of the, of the porch. It did not include the porch, is all I'm saying.
Doesn't have any, anything with a roof that projects more than two feet of council's coverage, does it?
I mean, okay.
So does that include the porch?
It should, yes.
Maybe kindly step to the podium. No, you can step to the podium, just give us your name, that's all.
Yeah, so the, the coverage, we're within coverage requirements.
Okay, fine. And state your name. Thank you. Anybody else? John Chris. Yeah, we can consider a solar roof on this.
Maybe the, maybe the client's seat, if he was there, dear.
Sure, just shortstop the podium, exactly. State your name. I give Michelle the word. We would, and we did consider a solar roof on it. I, the, it doesn't have enough southern exposure to really get it very well. There's not the best, there's not really the best sun exposure there. Love to have one, I think it's great, but right now it doesn't look like we get enough.
Selective exposure due to trees surrounding the porch, due to the orientation.
It builds a little bit of both, the orientation of the house and the roof, and the, the dense foliage cover. That area doesn't get a ton of, if afternoon is good, but that's about it.
You mentioned several times about the tate walls that will be rule changed, altered, or visible parts of any new retaining walls with natural stone.
They will absolutely. We're going to use a thin stone or similar material, they will all be clad in a veneer stone. Or in some cases, again, we'll be modifying slightly, use this as stacked stone wall, it will be replaced with stacked stone wall. Again, we're trying to use the stones as much as possible, they're part of the stone some premises.
Also, you mentioned paddios, these will all have a tubular water infiltration.
The paddies?
No.
I don't know, but we will make sure to water these properly.
I say water infiltration, I mean, it's not just a massive slab, gaps between it, like Belgium block where water can seep into it.
Yes. No, these are non-permeable, they're paper-covered, concrete-based for the paddios. And so water is being handled in the new detention system on the runoff of the paddios.
It seems that the patio will be constructed with various separate slabs of stone or stone-like material gaps in between where the water will go in.
No.
It's going to be a solid.
Yes, solid and still be to drain.
Setting concrete.
Yes, sorry.
So concrete slabs, so.
But there are, in the plan, sorry, this was a shift, in the plan, there are a number of planter areas with, in several locations, in terrace, that obviously will not want to be funded.
Do you have a landscaping plan, or will plans be put in as part of this?
Absolutely, I mean, if we go back to the site plan, you can see that a little. We definitely, the Delvertos are very plant-focused people. And if you look, for example, it's hard when you have a pointer. All along the house at the backyard, we are adding planters, we're adding planters between the lamps. We are adding planted material at the top side of the pool area. But also, there, there is, the area right there, we just kind of, yeah, so that is being added along the right-hand side, and where the pepper curse from now, which is south of the pool. Those are existing planted hills that we are maintaining, and we will only add material to them.
What material do you plan to do about that specific point?
In that case, we do not have a specific landscape plan, no. But as you see, if we go to the photos again for a second, to the pool area, I think it's almost the last photo. You'll see how dense the planted area is, so we could probably just be adding annuals and annuals that will kind of brighten things up. So if you look right there, where either is, is the utility areas, these plants are all going to be maintained, and they will only be added to it. Also, the trees, the trees as well, the only, there are two existing trees that, if you go, go back one, please, I think, for. Maybe one more, you'll see that in that, this end of the pool area, maybe if you add one more, please. Okay, right there. So if you see at the chimney, just to the left of the chimney, there are two existing trees, which are cherry trees, which we're actually going to replant on the site.
Pretty good trees.
They are, but the Delverto's, so on. We already moved one on the property that was, yes, success, so hopefully, please do this.
The plants, either annuals or carnivals you're considering, native plants or, you know, plants of one of those, Japanese barberry or anything?
No.
I always ask this question. So I'm asking it again.
Locals the way to go.
So if you native plants, if you're representing this commission, you'll be all native to this area.
Diane Star.
I'm sorry, can you please step to the podium? Given that we're on Zoom, we have to be sticklers to the.
Sorry, I'm Michelle Delverdo, so I'm going to answer the client question. Our existing property that we have been in for eight years, Diane Star, who is a local New Canaan resident herself, is the person who has maintained and helps us with all the native plants that we do plant. And we continue to like that look, and we will continue to use her, we just haven't gotten to that point yet. But we are absolutely all about what should be here and keeps in line with the property.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom, commissioners, questions? I have a question, did you need to get a win, let's.
Did, yes, we've been through weatherings and sanitation, we have received.
Okay, perfect, okay. Everybody good? Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll open it up to the public, we'll start in the room here, would anybody in the public like to address this? Okay. Seeing none, Lynn, please check Zoom for anybody who'd like to address the application. Okay, perfect, thank you very much, several questions. Item number two. 55 Pine Street, upon application, David Rucci, Lambert, Tullian Rucci, authorized agent, Pinespeak Partners LLC, honors for site plan approval pursuant to Section 8281D and special permit approvals pursuant to Sections 44D5 modifications, special permit application to allow permit for a space of 10,000 square feet approved February 20, 2020 for properties located in the SZA Zone at 55 Pine Street, Mr. Rucci.
Hi, good evening, David Rucci, Lambert, Tullian, Rucci, New Canaan, here this evening representing Pinespeak Partners, who are the new owner of 55 Pine Street. With me, and I have your architects, CCG Architects, Jimmy Martin, and I have engineering Todd Ritchie, he's going to be on Zoom tonight, and I have Robert Hart, real estate consultant for Pinespeak Partners. And we have a great situation here because basically have local residents who are moving their offices within New Canaan. to this business A zone. And a lot of that is due credit to this commission allowing for first floor office in business A zone. And we would have lost this particular tenant, my guest, had not made that change a couple of years ago. Commission members that not involved in that, I can just tell you that, basically, the business A zone runs from Zoom box, all the way down Pine Street, across where South Avenue is, all the way down Cherry Street, and then essentially ends up crossing across the E Street. So all those particular buildings there were mixed use, whether they were retail, whether they were office, medical, et cetera, were all in these various buildings. And came to this commission three years ago to say that, you know, it's sort of a high project buildings and really felt that it was important to have the business A zone allowed for retail on the first floor. And this commission passed that, used to be a special permit, over ten thousand square feet of office space in the first floor for the business A zone would be allowable with special permit. Obviously, we had to go through this commission, about pardon, about improvements to the building, et cetera. And that's what we did, brought an application back in two thousand twenty, for February two thousand twenty, for Cross Insurance, who's gonna move about twenty employees up here to three different, three different locations that they have, three different locations between French and Canin. Luckily, they actually ended up staying in Canin, they found a spot here where they were already located. And they ended up selling this particular piece of property to Pine Street Partners, and Gridiron Partners is the local group that owns this property now. And they're moving from Elm Street, where the bankwell building was, down to Fifty Pine Street. And in doing so, they're doing significant, really nice changes to this building that I think the commission is going to appreciate when we go through it, it's modification, special permit, modification site plan, we already have approval for over ten thousand square feet of office space in this particular piece of property. I'll go over the, sort of, the basic changes that we're doing, just like I kind of identified this for you. Lynn, would you mind putting up the, I think the third? So that's the front? Yeah, that one, actually go back one please. I'm here, they're not doing it, I'm looking at, and what I handed out is page three. It's the original site plan, it's not for that, it's not one right before that? Yeah, there we go, thank you. So this is the original approved site plan, and if you recall, we went through at least two hearings on this particular site plan. Mr. Turner, Mr. Radman, we wanted to talk about how the circulation was gonna work in the front, remember we called, trying to figure out exactly the best way to kind of do a one-way aspect of this particular part of this building and try to get some greens and try to get handicap parking in. And this is what we ended up, actually coming up with in the end, this is now been changed. We have, Malone McRoom did this, and SLR, that is, they take it over with Malone McRoom, so it's kind of the same groups that have been involved. Go to the next slide, please. So, we just had, so, you'll note here, and I'll let Todd Ritchie go through, you know, the exact, he just has a site plan. But you'll see here, what we did was, we essentially moved the handicap parking to the back of the property, put in an elevator, and added in both walkways to the front and to the back of the property. Before, there was no elevator, the trash was inside. It was a little bit more convoluted as far as sort of the site plan, but we've also added a lot more green into this particular site that you look off. To east, you'll see that we added patio, a patio area, and the patio areas there can be serviced by both the front of the property and the back of the property. And we've also added some electrical charging stations in this particular site. Those are kind of, just sort of the highlights of the difference here, we still have the one way in front. We did lose a curb cut in the front of the property, and I think if you remember, those of you who were here, that was always sort of the tricky part, we were trying to keep the four spots in the front of the property that are on the street. And that created sort of a circulation issue on the, on the east side of getting out of the properties. And that is why we basically took out one of the front, front spots that are on the street, opened up that curb cut, and now it allows for a lot easier access to come out of that useful area from not only the one-way area, street that comes through there, but also, you know, had a tandem parking there, we had four, two tandem parking, the first time now we have three. We have a net loss of one spot for last time we were here before. The site itself only has twenty-four spots right now, just the existing site. And it has twenty-four spots, no handicap access, no handicap spots on the property, okay? The one that we did cross, we went up to twenty-nine spots. And we had three handicap spots and two tandem, of which were three handicap spots and two tandem spots. So we have lost a net one spot on this particular site, which I bring your attention, so it's still more than what we had before. But we're not really moving many more people into this site. And what Pine Street Partners is doing, are capitalizing, is we're moving about twenty people, twenty, twenty-five people into the site. About five more than at least what Boston's planning on doing. But they're really more of a hybrid model, they're not all going to work every day. Their business calls for a lot of travel, so they're not necessarily going to have twenty-five spots here all the time, keeping up. At the time, that's not what happens now on their site, they don't expect that to happen in the future. I think the best thing, would you rather talk about the site plan first, or you want to get Todd Ritchie up, or would you rather go to the architectural plans on the site?
Whatever you want to do with this, Richie.
Okay, I think maybe the best thing to do is, let's put Todd Ritchie on, because he talks more about kind of the differences in the site, he's on Zoom today. And he's, he's the engineer on the site, he can talk about parksaping, landscaping, and site development, like I said, he has some good experience in this, this process from pointing to the original site. So, do I have to do anything, Lynn, Chris?
Good evening, for the record, my name is Todd Ritchie, professional engineer with SLR, as David said, formerly Malone of McRoom. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. David, I think you stole a little of my thunder here, but why don't we back up and I'll go through the existing conditions for those of the commissioners that aren't too familiar with the property, if there are any. The location of the property, Fifty Pine Street, to the north, northeast, and southeast are, is Walgreens property. So to the rear of the property, they have a parking area, and to the north, northeast, they have their building for Walgreens. And then to the south, southwest, is the Performing Arts Conservatory. So this building is in between those two properties. There's two vehicle accesses from Pine Street, there's the sort of northerly, southerly, as David mentioned, currently two-way, because there's access to the rear parking area from the south, the southerly access, and to the northerly access is a, access to a loading dock. And then you have the one-way along the front from south to north. And then in the back, you have expansive area for, for parking and also another loading dock on the rear of the building. The coverage of the property is mostly impervious between roof and pavement. Along the south of the building, there's that driveway access two-way, it's currently fifteen feet wide, which is pretty narrow. Similarly, to the north as well, a little bit wider. There's a ramp in the front of the building between planted area and also, and the building itself that achieves the transition from, to the, to the entrance for accessibility currently to the upper floor, and then there's a rear entrance, of course, as well. And then on the northerly side, there's a stairwell down to the lower level as a egress, and the south side of the building, there's upper level egress, that's a stairway, staircase down. There's two existing trees to the north of the building, there's twenty-inch maple, and on the southerly property line, there's a twenty-four-inch maple. Quite a slope from the loading dock north of the building down to the grade of the rear parking lot. All the drainage, essentially all of the drainage travels to the rear to catch, to, there's a couple of catch basins in the rear, one in the center, and connects to an existing storm drain that traverses the property from north to south. I'm trying to think, that basically covers this up for, there's a retaining, existing retaining wall essentially on the property line and just over the property line to the, I guess you would say, to the east, east, northeast area, all the way to the northeast, southeast. Next slide. As David mentioned, the previous plan, which I was not personally part of, but certainly have reviewed it and understand what was trying to be accomplished for the previous potential tenant. There was maximizing parking, obviously, is, is the focus. It's a little bit of a challenging site, because there's just one-way access to the rear, the, and the bulk of the parking, which is in the rear. And then there's one way in the front, and there's also no need, at least for the previous client or the current client, to have the existing loading docks. So this plan did away with the loading docks, similar to what's being currently proposed. It maintained the ramp in the front, it had handicap spaces in the front. As David mentioned, it maintained for parallel parking spaces that exist along the street. It maintained the existing width of the driveway to the rear at fifteen feet. It had handicap parking in the front and rear, had one more handicap space than this required by building code, so a little extra there. And just a little correction to what David said, the previous plan for onsite parking had thirty spaces, we're currently proposing twenty-eight, so we were actually losing two, and there's good reasons for those. There's, one is, if you go to the next slide, in the area in the north of the building, if you see the sort of the brown coloring, there's a square there that's gray, and that's the transformer that needs to be installed for the, for the building, so that's a location for that right there. And then there's also in the upper right-hand corner of the rear parking lot, there, we did move the dumpster back to a position exterior to the building, as is typical, and that's the location for that. So with that, we lost one space in the front, which was a tandem parking space, not ideal anyways, and the rear out of necessity for the dumpster. This plan, as you can see, certainly adds a lot more vegetation to the overall site plan. Let's start at the front, we're still maintaining, replacing the sidewalk and curb along the frontage of the property, redoing the driveway aprons. As David mentioned, we're proposing this time around to widen the southern access driveway access to three, by three feet, up to eighteen feet wide, because we want to maximize the space for passing vehicles. Since this will be, you know, significantly used building and parking lot, we certainly don't want to have minimal area for passing and vehicle maneuvering. So we have enough room to do that, and the, the client and the owner has requested that we pursue that. We also, because of that, and kind of redoing those aprons and, and the entrances, it made sense to scale back, if we're proposing to scale back, of course, the town has to, you know, prove that, public works has to be amenable to it. It's pulling back and removing one parallel parking space on the street, so we have better ability for maneuvering vehicles in and out of the property with turning radiuses and such. Whether it be vehicles or delivery trucks, you know, for like, you know, your typical UPS truck or something like that, we certainly want to make sure there's enough room for coming in and out of the site. I guess we also added, if you look at, if we can go down a couple of slides, there's a existing, that right here, previously, we, in the front, there was parallel parking, but there was nothing to protect the vehicles from other vehicles entering the, the site from the, you know, at the entrance, particularly to the south and coming around. So if you go down the next slide, and there was no trees in that area, we've added the, and, and islands and, and caps to the parallel parking to allow for trees to be planted out front on those, at those locations. We've also maintained the, the hedgerow in the front, as, as was previously proved. And we've also included a loading space, and this was something that was just further reviewed for practicality. A truck such as a SU thirty-sized vehicle, like a UPS truck, FedEx truck, something of that sort, coming onto the property, particularly with the trees there, you know, even vehicles there, the turning radius, they're not gonna, if they go into the back of the property, they're going, they're going to not be able to turn around. And most trucks want to come on the property, they don't want to go on the rear of the property, they just want to pull it front, as everybody knows, to the front of the business, drop off what they need to, and take off as soon as they can, and as short as a trip as possible. So to facilitate that turning of a, of that type of vehicle into the property and the maneuvering of it, we've added that pervious paver area up, up in the front of the building there, because that's in reality what a truck is going to do. Whether that area is there or not, they're gonna want to do that. And I don't think we want them, you know, running over the curb and through landscape area that may be there. So let's give them a spot so that they can make the turn, they can park for a small, short period of time, and then take off and be on their way. So that's something else we thought of as far as day-to-day operations on the site. We took out the ramp in the front, and then have added the vegetation in that area and plantings. So essentially, we took that ramp area, if you want to look at it that way, just in the front, taking that impervious ramp area and taken what was impervious there, moved it to the south and made it pervious in the area of the loading space zone. Just if you're looking at the fronts, you know, focus on the front of the building. There will be a step up in the front, as we mentioned, the front is, will not have a ramp any longer, but we've moved the ramp to the side, which is the, to the north of the building, so that it will ramp all the way around from the northwest or the north corner of the building, around near the transformer, and then all the way up to the patio. Where there will be a door at the upper patio for entrance, so that's an existing ground floor doorway. And then there's also a staircase from the upper patio, which is pervious patio as well, down to the lower patio. And there's a, there'll be a lower door that'll be, instead, that's an existing upper door, and then there'll be a new lower door installed for the lower level for egress onto the patio. Staying, staying in that area for, for a minute, as I mentioned, we reduced by one, the, one of the tandem spaces for the, to make room for the transformer, and also for a charging station for electric vehicle right there. We've also proposed, proposing a emergency generator to meet the needs of the, the client's operations, which is right there, the rectangle to the, to the east, or to the right of the page, in the center. Further up, they're right there, and with that, it'll be a sound attenuating enclosure, a fence, and also our providers to grow around the fence, so immediate screening with the fence, and then over time, our providers will provide a, a green screen around that area. Moving, I guess we could, I already talked about the patio areas, that's to provide amenity for the staff in the building. Lunch area, a nice little shady area with a couple more planted trees, I believe those are cherries there, and out front, lindens, two lindens on the, on, out front. And then there'll be a thirty-inch-high arborvitae planter all the way to the right of that patio area. Just for a screen to the parking lot and a buffer between that area and the parking lot. Just for a screen to the parking lot and a buffer between that area and the parking lot. The previous plan showed 31 feet, I I believe, a backup space, a little bit excessive for the rear area. So we've utilized that excess space to pull away in the rear parking parking lot area to pull the curb line away from the building further and provide some more landscaping areas along the the face of the building. We have the, as David mentioned, two handicap spaces which are required by building code and ADA accessibility. They can both share one striped aisle. One has to be ban accessible, minimum eight feet wide and minimum eight foot while striped aisle, so that we provided those and there's accessibility into the building, as mentioned, this time around proposing an elevator inside the building to provide full accessibility throughout the building. Lastly, I would say is that we have again the dumpster in the upper corner of the property and the the lighting, those little circles to the left of the dumpster. There's one to the left of the dumpster along the property line and then down to the lower right. Those are the previous locations of the parking lot lights and we're maintaining those locations as well as the same fixtures that were previously approved. As well as, you know, overall signage, you know, we'll have stop signs, stop bars, appropriate traffic arrows and if you go up a little bit, we do a plant list for all the landscaping. For up on the screen, totally the top of the page. Go to the right. Right, right there and as you can see, our previous plan, we had, I think, five trees, I think there were a couple cherries and I think they were lindens as well. We're proposing cherries and lindens, but more of more of them and arbivites. And all of the other grasses and daylilies and flowers and hydrangea, I'm not a plant person, but I just wanted to bring your attention to this. We thought it out and we feel that we've really enhanced the landscaping of the property to the, you know, optimal level that it can be for what we're providing this time around on this this site plan with the revisions we're proposing. Let me just go through a couple of my notes after that, just to make sure I covered everything. So overall, the impervious area increases by about 300 square feet, which is not a significant amount and it's below the town requirements for detention. We are proposing a stormwater, if you go back to the proposed plan. You could go to the rendering if you'd like. Right back in the rear parking lot, that circle in the middle that we're proposing as maintaining as a catch basin insert inlet, but it will be a water quality type hydrodynamic separator unit, which will provide water quality from all of the collected runoff before discharging into the drainage system. That's all I have.
Thanks, Tom. Would you like to ask questions now?
I think Mr. Richard, let's hear the entire presentation.
Alright, so I'm just Damian Martin with CPG Architects to go through his plan.
Hello, I'm David Martin with CPG Architects, I'm the senior project director. Start off with the site photos. Let's go down. So this is the existing building. As you can see, a brick facade with cinder block on sides to it. There are actually battery type windows that are installed now. That we'd like to replace and we'll see some of them are taken over. There is the pay to some of the cinder block at the parapet. Go down. Go down. Spoke about the loading dock on the side which is also falling apart as well as some of the little that are over existing windows. Go down to the next page. Okay, go down. Alright, this is, this is a proposed plan of the ground floor. And I'm not going to dwell on this too much, but we're adding a new vegetable to the plan as well as elevator that will connect both floors. Off the site. Go down. The lower floor will act as so you'll be able to actually access the ground floor from the front and the lower floor from the back, so this building actually has two faces. Go down. And this is the proposed elevation, so we felt like we needed to maintain the brick facade, which is absolutely beautiful and within with the fabric within the paint's architectural history. So we wanted to keep that, but we wanted to make sure that it still had a presence, some kind of curve field, so we added a glass both to allow a lot of light within to the space. Proposing to replace all the windows to insulated glass windows. We wanted to keep the concrete, the cast concrete fans that you can see in front of the building. As well as at the base and at the cells. And we wanted to create more interest, so we added a canopy which not only is functional, but gives it is a little more of a point of interest at the front. Go down. Back of the, so tree of the back of the building, similar to how the base of the building. Added a kind of, you have a classic tree where we're replacing the windows here as well. Creating a lower patio as well as a higher patio on site. And actually forgetting more only feeling like it was perfected there, yes, I adding planters along the lower patio to kind of screen from some of the car. Our access, that access. Go down. See, we have a lower screen on the roof, which is there for screening the technical systems. This mover system, it seems from the building actually have a site drawing showing that from 100 feet out, not even the visibility, but it's there for when you are at Walgreens, higher parking lot. Go down. This is a sexual elevation showing the ramping of the site. And as you can see there's a ramp that leads to the upper patio that allows accessibility to go from from the street level to the top ground level. Go down. This is part of the building where added on it, so it stands on the color, the black color with stuff along the side, so in front of the building will be great. For me and the back of the the building and the side of the building, the two colors brought with us along with some of the circles. This rendering here shows the screen generator planting on the side. As well as showing how access the site on the front to the upper patio as well as the lower patio. This is from the site. So I planting as well as so now let's see some of the concept images. That we have. Around site, we're going to add that bar railing, that's the black railing. So allow visibility to the different patios. Section, the drawing show the stuff of the film, the size. That will increase the the building. And then added a banner to kind of supply traffic, the best traffic. I'm going to open up some of the materials that we brought. So at the base of the building. We're proposing having this darker color, he is a stucco color. And at the ground floor would be a lighter color, so it's a two tone color. This is a window system that we like to use, which is aluminum clad system. It's wood on the inside and the outside. And all windows will be black, all the windows will be black. So this is the color, it's a non reflective metal, it's a matte color, matte black. And the canopy would be also a matte color as well, a matte dark color.
What's the rating?
I'm not sure what the rating is.
Is thermal rating, you know, how it's insulated. It's a normally
Normally insulated glass unit. It's orange, so. Stay on your own.
Yeah, it's thoroughly froled.
Yeah, that's a simulated divided light, so it doesn't actually separate glass, one piece of glass.
And the bottom portion should be operable. Yes, yes, we're going to have hoppers on the bottom of the window so that it'll allow pressure area and I assume on drawings, if there's no elevator on the basement level, it's just a drafting thing on your drawing.
Yes, please, stay, also Dan Redden on eight dash three. Look at the spaces there, true, supposed to be.
Yeah, it may have been turned off.
Yeah. A layer issue, yeah.
Gentlemen, it's Kent Turner, I thought we were going to save questions until after the presentation.
Well, if anybody wants to jump in, feel free, if anybody has an media question, so.
I've got a few. Can we go back to the the floor plan? It it looks like there's a disconnect between the site plan and the floor plans. The new rear entry. I do, yes, that drawing right there, I don't see the elevator.
Yeah, we just mentioned that it's a drafting area, it's actually turned off on the plans. It's there is a glass elevator that makes both floors and allows a lot of natural light in from the rear, so that mass there doesn't block light getting into the space, so.
So, so this is your new main entry actually for handicapped people and most of the employees because the parking's in the rear. So they enter into a pantry area?
Yes, it's a large cafe that actually leads you out into the lower patio at the top of the page. Yeah, and it was on the back of the building, but there is a large cafe and you do enter into the
Just, you know, in the spirit of ADA, it it just seems like the entry for a disabled person, for example, in a wheelchair. You know, the elevator, I'm assuming is where the stair is or in that general area. Will they be able to see it, is there wayfinding, how does how does somebody get around and understand how to navigate that space?
There definitely will be wayfinding within the space and then there'll, there's actually a little planter there. Facing to the double doors, you'll be able to actually view the elevator as you walk in. And and the door entry is on a level with the party, so that that's something that we thought thoroughly about and went to raise the grade in order to make it for the best experience.
Okay. The the other ADA entry, is there any handicap parking close to that area that's on the side of the building?
No, all the both parking screens for the handicap are in the rear of the building.
I'm just curious why the you have a an ADA entry there and not in the front of the building?
Well, we wanted to have dual access to the front of the building. To the ground floor, I could say, as well as the lower floor, but we did not want to have to lose the green space up front to To the ground floor, I could say, as well as the lower floor, but we did not want to include the green space up front to.
But you know, in the in the spirit of ADA. There should be an equivalent or the same entrance used as an able-bodied person. You know, I appreciate what you're you're doing, trying to accomplish, I just. Might be a little concerned about, you know, do you really meet the spirit of ADA by not having that front entry accessible? And and instead substituting the the entry on the side. And I I'm not gonna, you know, pass judgment on that, it's just more of a philosophical question and. I I hope you've given it a lot of thought and you feel comfortable with what you're proposing.
Definitely, we've given it a lot of thought and we felt as if. Accessing the entire site. Able to access the entire site. Through our handicap was the net, so we knew that there are definitely a lot of challenges and wanted all the buildings guidelines. And we felt like we. Did our best to do so. By allowing access to both patios. For handicap as well as. For ground floor as well as the whole floor.
Okay, one final question then is, you know, I think you've done a very nice job of. Delineating the different textures in the building and and, you know, creating a very strong statement, I think the. You know, the black windows and the audience. Stand out, it's it's a very, you know, it's a nice statement and. I'm just curious about the stucco, are you gonna have some kind of joints that articulate that, break that down into more of a. Or something a little more than just plain stucco?
Definitely, if you go back to the elevations that are above. Above the planter. You can see that there are joints that articulate the building. So. There's vertical as well as horizontal points around the windows.
I see.
Yeah, so you can see those vertical joints and it's all all the way down to the. The last slide.
Okay, that 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 looks very nice. Signage, where where are you thinking that signage would be mounted and? How would you deal with that? Is this one tenant or multiple tenants?
One tenant. Signage would not be mounted to the canopy, we're going to provide a separate.
Okay. And this is the final question, you know, I see you're screening the mechanical equipment, but. You are going to have fans, you are going to have more equipment up there than what you're showing, is there any strategy to help screen that or? Is it set back far enough that you're comfortable with it?
Yeah, that definitely, I think you have enough space. That you can have a smaller van that aren't visible from ground level. Away from the edge of the building and we're going to place all our components within that. That's the.
Okay, that was my last question, thank you very much. Well done.
For the record, all the questions were from Commissioner Turner. Or should we talk with the way or Mr. Rucci? Okay, Mr. Rucci, we have any other speakers? Okay, great, let's open it up to additional questions, Mr. Redman.
So. A couple of things to touch on, but I do want to sort of reiterate what Mr. Turner brought up and. As the designers and architects to reconcile the ADA accessibility issue, but. It really doesn't seem to be an equivalency to the rear access for someone coming in that back door through the elevator because it would be. Coming in the elevator and ending up in the belly of the office space as opposed to the front entrance where you're in a. Sealed, contained access control reception area. And then coming into the space, so. Again, it's up to you guys how to deal with it, but it's. It's not really creating equivalent. Access condition for someone that is disabled. You know, let you guys figure the internals out. The generator, there is a generator on the property, assuming that one is at least six feet from the property line. It is, it is right. So that remark, it is six feet away from the property lot, great. And is that gonna have and sound technically, great, yes. And then this is more a, I guess, a. Civil and town planner question on the parking, I know that we have the previous plan from. And we had approximately thirty spots back then, we're down to. We had twenty five now. Twenty eight. Twenty eight with the on-street parking, oh, with the R Street, the thirty counted on-street parking.
Now, it's it's thirty previous onsite and twenty eight onsite now.
So how's her, say your name please?
Todd Ritchie with SLR for the record.
Right, thank you. So Lynn, just maybe it's just a refresher for me in terms of how we kind of circled and came to this number, but. If we go strictly by our regulations, six point two. Based on the square footage of two levels and two criteria, one per two hundred, one for two seventy. It comes up with the required parking, a required parking count of sixty two, I know we don't have that, but that's what the calculations come in. And even when you. When you do all the reduction factors that are available in the code, you don't get anywhere near. Twenty five or thirty. Right? And even if we were to take a. A more liberal office parking count of three per thousand, which is typical lease criteria, we still end up at forty two spots. Sorry, forty four spots. And we have forty two users in the space as strong, I know that they're going to be traveling and it won't be a full capacity of forty two, so. That helps us there, but. How will we? How do we justify? Getting down to that number?
Last time we settled on it, the one experiment.
Yeah. Understood, but the previous use, since we are changing the use, it's going from retail to business. The previous use had a significant amount of storage in the facility, it's saddled, right, so it had retail on first floor, it had. Storage warehouse downstairs and some three fifths. And obviously, the the parking load for retail is significantly different than a fully occupied business occupancy.
Excuse me, excuse me, she cannot be heard.
When when they came through in February.
Excuse me, but maybe it'd be better.
Yeah, yeah, I think that speaker's not picking you up.
So when they came through in February of twenty twenty, the anticipated use at the time was also in the office. And so, and that's where the regulations changed. So the the modifications to the special permit, they're not anticipating another lease that's different from what you approved in the February twenty twenty offices. So they're reducing it by two parking spaces as well from what you approved.
And if you remember, Mr. Redman, in the past, what we've done with existing parking lots is the commission is like that, it would be used in the parking lot in this particular case, retail. And all this are actually the same calculation, so it's two hundred per spot, because. Business, and no, no change in the use, it's not as far as the parking regulations go, so generally what they've done in the past, whether it's. Screen or religious building, whatever it happened to be, they said, look, I said, listen, you're not changing the use and the parking standard could be the same anyway. So it's essentially the parking lot for better or for worse, legally not performing lot is the housing spaces you have. So initially, there was only twenty four spots on this spot for the retail use that it was before the metal saddle. And that wasn't used as much, I agree, you know, to your point, as far as that particular retail, it could have been a Walmart amount, or something like that, it could have been. But those calculations aren't any different, so. I will say in this particular case, they have converted some of the stores that we talked about, one for about a thousand square meters, the first one's about ten. Eighteen hundred to eleven for cross, and this is probably more like eleven four, eleven five, so there's been a slight increase. In the actual office use itself from before, but that increase is like a big leading room for them. And I could also tell you that, I think, from our client's perspective, I mean, they need to have parking, like, there's no interest in them. Filling up a lot that they can't use, so.
Sure, yeah.
We've had, we've had conversations already with. Eton centers next door, they have parking, we've, you know, we're agreeing with them, if we ever get over a certain period, you know, if it's not really working, we're gonna go out and grab those spots. And we haven't been able to, that's.
Behind the Walgreens.
Yeah, behind the Walgreens, that makes the most sense, they have some extra parking there, so to your point, yes. We've thought about that, I mean, drugs, it's an issue of, this is, this guy, these are their businesses, where these people live, they're not gonna create a situation on their site that's gonna be. Adverse to anybody around it for their own employees, so. You know, and I would say that in the past, we have, we should have looked at this. Parking the challenge in this town for any, anywhere, everywhere that we have these sites. And I think that they've done a good job of increasing the spaces and eventually, we're lucky enough that we too have Walgreens next to us that have packed a lot of spaces.
Good, thank you. Mr. Ritchie, did you say that you're contemplating with the the wire curb cuts, loops, that space on the street, on the street? The town awareness?
We have not discussed it with the town, but we will proceed to do that under condition of approval. We could do it either way, we could leave it as it is, but we prefer to do it this way.
I guess. It seems to be, it's discussed in town.
I think today they would have to approve it, so you can get a lot of issues, issue that assuming that the town approves it. Or. I would, I mean, our clients are moving spaces. They're looking to sort of get this. Soon rather later if possible. And if the condition is that the town does not allow that spot to be removed. That's the site might be improved, this spot remaining, but as it was the first time actually, if we have space for some circulation, it's gonna be better.
And John Goodman, by the way, Mr. Rucci, do you know how many spaces gridiron capital currently uses? And did we? Anybody grid irons here, do we have any feedback on how that has just been over twenty two spaces?
We do have Scott Harrison on Zoom right now and did discuss that, I mean, it's hard because the last. Year, they have, it's a lot, but they do a lot of traveling, they're right next to the train station, so whatever work they do in and out of the city, they have parking actually at the train lot as well, so I'm assuming they will hold on to. But Scott wants to comment on it at all.
Yeah, our parking has been ample to date and we will be. Even going forward, it should be even more so, the number of spaces we're talking about, given that we're moving into more of a hybrid. Situation, so it'll actually, on average, fifty percent, you know, the folks will be in the office at a particular, particular point in time, so hopefully. We feel very comfortable with the number of parking spaces, plus the conversations, you know, next door if if needed, but we don't necessarily think we'll be using those, but understand if that's required.
Thank you. Other commissioners?
John, we have a few questions. The fence order to. Walgreens town, but. What are you contemplating for some retaining wall? I'm sorry, the wall, the separation is fence or what? I'll let Todd actually answer that.
Is that the, are you talking about the separation between the rear parking lot and the Walgreens lot?
As well as more towards the front of the building, any. Fence or other structure you're thinking to separate to?
We weren't proposing any, the the rear wall is, you know, gets to be. Quite high to the. The east eastern corner. At the very top page. And. It gets to be just a couple of feet next to the Performing Arts Center. That's how it is now, we're not proposing to change that, it is used as a parking lot that way. And then along the southerly property line, we're just proposing to expand it a couple of feet and maintain a curb line along there.
So the question regarding the dumpster in the corner. Mentioned if I heard correctly that. Well, wanted to have delivery trucks to stop in front on that brick area created in front of the building. Then get back out, back down the access way and then out the street. I'm wondering, if you're picking up trash, obviously, it goes down where trash is, so I'm wondering about the. Physical limitations, if any, of access of rush use trucks to get down there or pick up dumpster loaded.
Yeah, there certainly are, and we've certainly had discussions with the owners about that. They're going to have to schedule that to be off hours for pickup, because there's not enough maneuverability back there with vehicles in the parking lot. But there really is no other option for that. I guess the only other thing would be to shift all of the parking spaces. To the north along that row and then. Bring the. The trash down to the, basically to the south and then a truck can come straight in. But I'm not sure that this desired visibility in that location is what somebody would want to see from from also the street walking by. So. It it's a challenge, but that's a challenge they're willing to accept and to manage on the site.
We do planning to handle recycle as well as storage.
I'd have to toss that one over to the. The owners.
We, I guess, two things, one. You know, very low usage from for garbage today, we even debated whether or not we needed a spot, so in terms of. Traffic of a of a truck going in and out, emptying that, we think it's gonna be fairly minimal, but as we talked about, it would be after hours, we do currently separate garbage today into recycle and will plan to continue that. So in terms of actually setting that up, I haven't thought through that entirely, but we certainly expect to continue to do that.
So. Looking at the charging station, the rear lawn. And next to it, there's this tiny sliver of parking space, I'm not quite sure why you left it there and didn't just restrip and widen its space a bit.
It's just a little bit of a buffer space to the side, I mean, we could widen it, or we can widen the handicap spaces to be a little bit wider, but. At one point, we're contemplating putting up retaining wall there, so that was the reason to keep it away from the wall. And then we since removed that, so it's probably just remnant from from when we made that modification.
As far as English and Hebrews, building on some of the comments of other commissioners regarding ADA access. Buttons on the door, a handicap person can press to close the doors, bell spin. Or front. Potential drop off with somebody or. Rear.
Yeah, I think we can put a handy, this is staying in line with CBD, I think we can put a handicap space where we have that. That tandem space now. But we would end up losing. The space that are. Um, but we would end up losing the space in our, so.
Oh, his question, the question was regarding a button in the front door to, uh, for app or button to have access, I guess, or notify.
Definitely we could put a button there, but we can also open that space up. So the front of the apartment as well.
And I just haven't seen people in, uh, wheelchairs or scooters sort of struggle doors. Uh, there's a, uh, during business hours, this button, which that can automatically open doors.
We definitely have automatic doors at all. Off there.
If you thought about solar on the roof, the flat roof, the sun.
The, the client is, um, looking into that right now. Um, it's definitely, uh, something that we're looking to see if it's, uh, um, financially, you know, for the, for the line.
You're not contemplating any bicycle or motorcycle part?
Um, not bicycle or motorcycle.
The generator is going to be diesel.
Yes.
And you can access it or refill and all that. So yes. And, um, I'm a question of plants. The plants are native or plants from far, far away or all native plants. Um, there are varieties, there are, uh, what is it? And cherry, uh, tree. It was one of the cherry trees you can see native, so.
I'm trying to answer that.
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure I can be honest with you. Um, I'm here covering for, uh, our landscape architects who can be on the call. Um, I could certainly check into that. Um, as far as I had been informed that they, everything was native, but, um, we can certainly ensure that it is. If it's, uh, not, then we can swap it out for something that is.
So, oh, requirement that they be, uh, fully native or something, the, uh, okay with, yes, yes.
Let's reply with, thank you, Mr. Chris.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Herring had a question, but he had to drop off. So just to follow up on Mr. Chris's question, this question was, uh, whether the E V charger will be a tandem charger and whether restricted.
Yes, it would be a tandem charger and it would be restricted.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Bash, uh, since I've been informed, Mr. Herring dropped off. You are now seated for Mr. Williams. Okay, other, other commissioners' questions? Everybody good? Okay, great. Let's open it up to the public. Let's start with Rome. Once again, I think we only have one person from the public. Probably regretting you attended tonight. Okay, Lynn, uh, can you check Zoom please?
I think one, there are only two people that possibly the basket do. So either you want to speak in a.
Okay. Okay, so, but, okay, thank you very much. So I'm sorry, Mr. Richie.
Yeah, just, I mean, just one thing, I mean, I think that, um, uh, it's just important to note that keeping a first class tenant in this town is a big, it's a big thing. And it's something that's really important. It's found on a number of levels. And, you know, this is following, uh, those design district guidelines we've heard a lot about in the last couple of months or so. And that was important. And, uh, David and his team did look at that. There's a whole bunch of things that in there talk about that's what it's going to look like, uh, the planting, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that that's clear that they did with about those design districts. They follow the P O C D as well as far as trying to make it closer to town. Leaving these retail spaces open to kind of take away a retail space like that on Saturday. Hopefully they go to this case here on Main Street or on Elm Street where don't give it. Um, as far as the parking goes, um, I, they're not just going to make it work no matter what. And they're not going to make the, the problem for anybody else in town. You're certainly getting the issue with respect on curb cut, whether or not that's applicable or not. Um, and if there's a, a recommendation, um, the handicap parking, I would try and move it to the front. And we can try and move it to the front, but we would lose another spot, if I guess, um, in the front. Um, if we can pick it up in the back or we put one in the back and one in front. It's just, it's a, it's an issue certainly look at, look at that and, you know, either come back to Lynn. Uh, see whether or not it's something that is workable, but we'd like to get this, uh, like the application. They're closed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Richie. This is our page. Okay, item number three, affordable housing legislation revisions, section seven point six, the independent zoning regulations. Uh, so I'm going to ask, uh, for perhaps comments from, uh, the planner, Lynn Abney or Krista Nielsen to spearheading this. Some committee to want comment I'll make is that, uh, over the past year, there has been, there's been a great, great amount of discussion about increasing the supply of affordable housing in the state of Connecticut. And what has emerged despite what certain political figures have said is that actually the canyon historically has been fairly progressive in terms of what it's trying to do. Including, uh, including affordable housing fund as well as, uh, uh, projects in place and ongoing create more affordable housing. I think one thing that I should realize though is, uh, historically, as we have approved, uh, multi-family applications in particular, uh, we have not had things like blue cherry zoning. So perhaps we have foregone the opportunity to increase our supply of affordable housing. And so, and, uh, keep this, when you think about this, this is the key initiative of what we're trying to do here. And in addition to this, we talk about this as a commission is we anticipate, um, increased, uh, whether it's, whether it's multi-family or whether it's next use, but coming years and perhaps sooner, will be sooner. We, we anticipate additional projects. And so that is, uh, sort of the key objective behind us pushing forward. Some of the revisions to the regulations is to create the opportunity for us to create additional affordable housing as additional projects come into town. Um, so, Chris, anything you'd like to add to that?
Um, no, I think, you know, you, you gave a great introduction to it. Um, you know, in terms of how we run tonight, I know that the objective is to obtain some public comment. I think there are still at least two outstanding issues that, um, the commission may want to discuss. And maybe we should do that before we take public comment because it may change the nature of the comment. If that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Please, please do.
Okay, so, um, as Mr. Goodwin said, we've been working for several months now on some revisions to section seven point six of our zoning regulations, which for those who are familiar, that section deals with affordable housing. Um, and most of the changes come in the term, in terms of a new section that will be added, section C under seven point six. There are some revisions to section A and B, which are existing, but section C is really the meat of it. Where we add regulations requiring a certain number of affordable units, um, when more than four dwelling units are being built at a time. And as Mr. Goodman pointed out, that is the gist of what inclusionary zoning is. Um, for those of us who've been both on the subcommittee and most recently on the planning commission, talking about this. Um, the draft that Lynn sent out today includes, um, some of the comments that I took away from our meeting last time. Um, and there's really two areas that I see that require potential additional discussion from us. I'm going to try and tackle the, what I consider the easier one first. Um, so that would be how we calculate the fee and lieu payments. Um, and last time there was conversation, the way it's currently written, um, under section seven point six C five is that the one-time cash contribution will be equal to 300% of the area median income for a family of four per, um, per affordable housing unit, and that will go to the housing trust fund. We talked about whether 300% is appropriate and I did do some research. Um, so 300% in 2021 of area median income would bring in $342,000 per unit. 400% would bring in $456,000 per unit. 500% would bring in $570,000 per unit. And 600% would bring in close, just under $700,000 per unit. Um, so someone can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that the conversations we heard were that it maybe costs somewhere between 400 and $600,000 to build one affordable housing unit. So I'm thinking that we may want to up that 300% number to at least 400, if not 500%. Um, do you guys have thoughts on that?
Um, this is Art Cassavant, uh, speaking. Um, I think that that's a good idea. The unit costing is quite variable depending upon features, including what, whether or not cost of land is embedded. But I think raising it to 500% would bring us in the range of what actual construction costs could be.
That is John Chris, I would, uh, concur with, uh, Mr. Cassavant. I also note regarding where we stick and going forward, we may need to consider differential inflation rates. So for example, the change in personal income may be somewhat modest, but the change in the cost of construction may not be so modest. And so we may find that the, the personal income multiplier sort of stagnant. And yet you see construction costs go up and up and up. And so the 500% number that, uh, Mr. Cassavant mentions may be fine today, but if we fast forward five, 10 years, it may prove to be something less than fine. It's a difference of cost, so it's something also the commission may wish to consider whether some sort of inflation change or other guide may be appropriate, or whether we just simply review this periodically and stick a bit in a new number as circumstances.
Question on that, uh, perhaps to, um, let have a, but you know, if other towns, what they've done about the question.
Um, it's, it's different for every town, um, different things have done, it's definitely the different process. It's always been best, that's them, I believe, um, Krista, uh, Miss Nelson, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, Stanford annually updates theirs. Um, and, uh, Darian is actually looking to update theirs. So, but there's a different number. We revisit it.
So your second idea.
Revisit, yeah. I think that's something the commission may, we want to put on us to do less for this though. Directly we need to take the pressure off of this, make sure the numbers work.
There's no, but your thoughts on that?
Um, I think that's totally appropriate. Uh, I did discuss this with Lynn earlier today and we discussed whether using this percent of area median income is the best policy for exactly the reason that Mr. Chris just raised. Um, I think it's the simplest way to start. Um, but yes, we might certainly find that in time we need to go to a more complex calculation. As Lynn pointed out, different places, you know, it ranges from the simple to like a full page of calculations to how you get to that number. And, you know, I, I guess my, my recommendation would be let's start with the simple and consider that we might need to come back and revise it over time if it's not working for us.
This is, uh, John Chris again. I think the concept I have in my mind is that when it comes to say 20 units, uh, rental apartments, let's say, that there should be, uh, economic indifference or equivalence between either a unit in the, one or more units in that building be heated to affordable housing versus payment. And so economically we should end up in the same spot. And so we have a, uh, heated dwelling unit in that building, or we have enough cash to build one some other place. Uh, but we end up in the same spot as far as creating affordable housing somewhere within the town. I think that's the concept you seem to be working with, which I would agree with.
This is Krista, agreed completely. I mean, and I think if we find that this fee and lieu is the preferred choice of people, then it probably means that it's not high enough or we haven't calculated it right and we need to, need to go back and look at how we're doing that. Any other comments on the fee of lieu before I go to the other topic?
Just add on sustained revenue, just to revisit one of the metrics on here in section three of the inclusionary zoning requirements on that matrix. Where the parameters on this, I'm just looking at the breakdown in the numbers that we're starting at least four dwelling units. Um, is that a state guideline or is that a recommended guideline based on other towns or?
So it, it, to answer your question, um, this is Krista again. It is not a state guideline. Um, through the subcommittee, you know, we looked at a number, I looked at a number of different regulations of surrounding towns. A lot of places, particularly bigger places like Greenwich and Stanford, I think they start closer to 10 units. Um, requiring a certain percentage is affordable. The thought at the time we were, uh, working on this was that given what was going on at the state level, it looked like we may be having more four-unit development happening. And so we thought if that's the case, then let's make the most, most of it and get some affordable units out of it. Um, so that's, that's how we came to that number, but certainly other places do start higher. And some places just, I think, do a percent of any development.
Makes us think we're going to have four unit developments?
Um, one of the legislations that was contemplated at this state needed a break around the train station to have, uh, four units of development.
Has that something in the past?
Yeah, it's not that. They're going to re, they're going to revisit it, but also just for me, Keenan, um, multi-family of four units or five units is more common than say a 10 unit development. So the thought is, um, as Neil said, stated was to sort of capture what we were going to have and capture an affordable.
Davis Bash, um, Miss Nelson, so when you were referring to area median income, what is the area?
It's the Stanford Norwalk Metropolitan Statistical Area, um, which is what HUD uses to calculate area median income. So I, I went straight to the HUD Housing and Urban Development website to, to get those numbers.
Do you know what town Townsend encompasses along with those two cities?
Um, I would have to look at a map, but I think it's basically, you know, the area between Stanford and Norwalk, which would include us and Darien, probably Greenwich, but I don't know.
Do you know if any surrounding towns use more specific median income that's, uh, specific to the town as opposed to the area median?
Um, I'm not familiar with that and I don't know. We'd have to find a way for that to be conveniently calculated, I guess. I mean, I just went with kind of, there's usually it's either area median income or state median income. Those are the two numbers that people use. So I just went with the higher of the two in this case so that we would net the most money with collection of the fee and lieu.
And just to add to Miss Nelson's statement, the 830 G legislation from the state, um, into state.
This is Commissioner Cassavant for the purposes of the, uh, statistical area two. Uh, in importantly, the footprint goes from Greenwich to Bridgeport. And, and there are a number of subcategories, including one that includes part of New York as well. But using the, the definition that has been proposed is probably the most logical set in the context of the 830 G.
Uh, John, I would question for Krista and Lynn, um, going back to Dan's question. Uh, what does Darien do? Just going back to the four to nine units. I think we talked a lot about Darien when we were talking about this town level.
Um, I believe. Sorry. I'm just looking for my notes on that.
I, I believe if I'm not mistaken, they use a percent and, uh, the 300% number might actually be from Darien or they, they're in the 100%.
I'm just worried about.
No, I'm at 300%.
You mean.
No, I'm asking about, uh, number of affordable.
I believe it's 12% of, um, but I don't know what their threshold is, I think.
Okay, so I have it here in front of me. Darien starts at five or more units and they just require a straight 12% across the board. Once you have five or more units. Greenwich was also five or more units. Um, they require 20% affordability after you hit five or more. Stanford is 10. Norwalk was between 12 or 20 or more, depending on where you are in the city. Um, and those are the ones I had.
And we, at a minimum, I think we should align ourselves with that five or more, like with this matrix, five to nine. And we, at a minimum, I think we should align ourselves with that five or more, like with this matrix, five to nine, with an ensemble of four. Would be in line with the rest of the brackets going down thirty one. Leaving the development of units of four or under. Not requiring, not having, uh, not having to comply with having that. Right? So I think it's just going to, given the scale, and I understand the states pretending on the, on the mass transit allocation and the type of development, they want to see around that. But I think putting it, uh, putting that four and over is going to hinder a lot of people developing on, I mean. Other than merit view, it's mostly small parcels to found that are going to develop in these types of, uh, houses. If you're forcing them to over to, uh, create an affordable unit, one out of four. It's going to change their metrics on, on doing the development in the first place. So, so what number would you start at? I would say five or over. I would align us with Darian branch, five to nine, 10 to 14. It just. Seems to make sense. I mean, I would personally, I'd go higher, but I don't think we're going to get to a higher number. This is my question, John Chris. I ran a couple of numbers. So for the quarter nine, it's four, it's 25% affordable. If it's nine, it's a little over 11% affordable. The rest are all 20%. The low number, the high number with a, and a 14 is a little over 14%. Next one is, uh, that's about 16%, then cool, uh, 17. If we just do a straight 20%, avoid all this, this is 20% and say for all partials, you do a pro rate of the 500%. So they throw cash in for the difference for the party. What I heard, they, they doesn't divide equally, absolutely, and not divisible by five. That's where I'm going with this. I heard is that's Darian does, right? They start at five and then it's, did I hear 12%?
Twelve.
Twelve percent. Let's say we do 20 and we start at five. Okay. So if you do five, you got one unit. That's simple enough. Do six, you have one unit and then the extra unit, you do a fractional in cash. Which goes into kitty, build more. So this, this way, the, the idea of, you know. Right? It's wrong. You sooner or later, the dog runs the end of its chain. So we have differential essentially affordable housing costs, depending on how many units you put up. You can incent people to put up different amounts of units, which may or may not why. If you do a straight amount, saying no matter what you, number you put up, five or more. It's 20%. It's like a, it's like a, uh, a flat excise tax. It's a very simple calculation. You're not biasing anyone to put up more or fewer and so forth to somehow decrease their portable housing. Get in, let's run boom with this. And simple math too. So you're combining numbers plus. Yeah. Unless you can split it, right? Unless it's. Plus divisible, plus five, 10, 15, 20. Does anybody else?
I, I think this, this is Commissioner Cassavan. I just wanted to provide a piece of input. I have just checked so that people are aware that the MSA, which go is, is actually numbered 14, eight, 60. The 2020 median family income, which goes from Bridgeport to Greenwich is a hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars. That's from the FFIEC.gov website. My comment on what Commissioner Chris just said though, and this may be helpful. Is that if we go to 20%, we have the potential to disincent creation of housing in New Canaan. Because at all, because in effect you have a very high land cost and you run the risk that we're too high. I, I, I agree with the notion of a flat number. We want to be over the eight thirty G target amount. So that no additional unit puts us in a hole as, 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 as has happened with the view. But I would only offer the comment that I'm not sure that 20% may not be too high.
Uh, John Chris again, I would, uh, sympathy for Commissioner Cassavan's view. My concern is that to the extent you have a, a sort of a unit cost that varies depending on how many, uh, units from the total building. Uh, your payment into affordable housing for a nine unit is going to be a lot less than payment for a four unit. And that differential incentive is something I just avoid. If it's not 20, it's 18 or 15 or 13, I'm open to ideas and I have sympathy with, uh, Mr. Cassavan's view. I just think a, a flat amount is a little cleaner and to the extent it's, it's not divisible into a clean symbol, single unit. The, the differential will be taken up through a, a payment and load on a prorated basis. So it's, it's simple math and it evens the playing field. Intuitively, tentatively.
Yeah. Uh, listening to Mr. Cassavan, uh, John Edward, um, not going against anything Mr. Chris just said, but. You know, I, I am thinking that probably the best thing to do is to be more conservative than liberal with our first. Yes, and at this, I, I think, you know, we do not want to disincentivize creation of house. So.
John Chris, I. Again, I don't want to get you. No, I, I don't want to disincent. Um, I, I think the number that was put for the fee in lieu of five hundred seems about right to me. Because no matter what, we're guesstimating on exactly how much it costs, it becomes a lot of land cost, destruction, all the rest. But it seems to be more of the ballpark than the four hundred percent or so.
Uh, this is Commissioner Cassavan again. I would observe as well that all of the units of affordable housing. That have been created in New Canaan in the last decade have been enormously advantaged by an effect zero dollar land cost. All of the costs have been pure construction because all of them were, uh, land that previously existed. This is an important issue because to the extent that you actually needed to use the fee in lieu money to cause units to be built. My suspicion is your actual unit cost of construction in New Canaan would significantly exceed six or seven hundred thousand dollars. And, and, you know, one of the things that we have successfully done in town through the four projects in the last decade. Is take the existing in effect free land that existed because of the prior, um, generally HUD based projects that began in the 1950s. We will not have, or I'm not aware of existing land stock, which would be available to build new housing. So from a policy perspective, the proposal on the table is quite compelling. Because it would incent, and I think we should try to incent developers to actually build the units. Rather than relying on trust fund contributions, which, and this is to Mr. Chris's earlier point, could become extremely expensive.
Would agree with Commissioner Cassavan. In effect, having a channel subsidizing directly, simply owning the land under the building and saying, we'll, we'll give it away for free. You know, maybe it's rented a dollar for 99 years, but let's not split hairs. It's free. Uh, and that makes a, a huge difference because cost of land can be overwhelming number. I mean, you're trying to build a house on a one and a half acre. Or one acre piece here, you're probably telling about a million dollars or something close to it, just, or, uh, it's not, it's not cheap. And that's, um, I, I agree simply for, uh, Commissioner Cassavan's comments. It's something we need to think about. It's fully loading the number, including dirt pants and structure.
Uh, John Edward, uh, I know I've asked this before. I forgot. I apologize that we had council review these regulations.
You did, uh, for the last two.
Well, no, they reviewed it and they're, they're okay with it. Missioners, uh, any other input for sure?
Okay. Um, just so I can make sure I've captured it correctly. At the moment, we're still okay with going to 500% of area median income for fee and lieu. And then if that's correct, I want to make sure I understand what we're doing with the table under, um, number three. Is that, are we good with 500% for now? Or do we want to go higher?
I'm very good with that number. I think it's a great number.
Okay.
Yeah. And then John Goodwin, I think, again, it's our, this is our first shot. We can always amend the regulations since we're learning. So I think that our honey bricks are a bit of a reason.
And I would also suggest sticking it in, uh, at five, at five units. And, uh, as Mr. Revan suggested, and that, uh. Instead of having this sort of scaled grid we have, we simply stick it in a, in a hard percentage number of units need to be created. With anyone that, anything that is not evenly divisible would be paid for pro rata via the 500%. Payment. So it's either an exact number of units, uh, as, as stated here, uh, or, uh. And or a number of units and cash. So that's equal.
Okay. So I have everyone, I, well, I don't know that everyone agrees with the five or more units, but that's what I was taking away. I thought what I heard was that some people thought 20%, uh, 20% of those units needing to be affordable was too high. How do we feel about 15%?
This is Commissioner Cassavan. I think 15% is a great starting point because it will always improve our performance against eight thirty G. But not serve as a tremendous excise tax, dis, tax disincentive to development.
Okay. Thank you. Other thoughts?
That 15% applies to 31 or more units, correct?
Yeah, it would apply to everything over, anything, five units or more, would, they would all be 15% per Mr. Chris's recommendation with fractional. Units going into the housing trust fund as a cash payment.
Uh, John Chris again, I have a question on the inclusionary housing or zoning fee of $10 per thousand. $10 for a very long time. I'm wondering if we may want to revisit that number, uh, which is essentially, um. I'll call it a tax on other structures. So four or fewer units, as well as any commercial structures would fall into this. And, uh, so this way that, uh, really all construction, uh, is contributing in some way, shape or form to affordable housing. I think it's what the peasant cheer is. I just wonder if $10 still works.
I mean, I, I'll defer to Lynn. What I recall hearing from, uh, Mr. Hobbs at the housing authority was that that was a, a pretty competitive number still. But, um, I, I have no idea how long that number is going to place and if it, if it works.
Uh, the number's been in place since the initial zoning, I think, about fifteen years ago, 2005, I believe.
John Chris, for example, we had a very strong year, I think, last year as far as applications of, that generated money went into this. How much did we generate?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
The reason I pose is that if we say that, uh, 2020 was a, was a big year. Which seems reasonable. Uh, look at what the number was and think about, okay, this is a good year. How many, uh, affordable units did we end up purchasing in fact with that? And look at, and we say, well, gee, that number looks great, or that number looks a little low, or that number is way too low. But this would be a, 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 a real world example on the good side. And so there are also bad times. And so we have to assume that during the bad times, the numbers would be a lot lower. Uh, and I think, uh, this is a way to stick, use some real world, world data to stick it in and probably number to help us inform our decision. So I'd love to hear the number of the last couple of years. We use that.
I could bring it back to the next meeting. I don't have.
Right? Thank you.
Okay. So if there are not other comments on those things, the second part I wanted to talk about, which I am afraid is the more difficult piece of it. Is, um, section four inclusionary zoning bonuses. And we talked about this last time. I have had a chance now that I'm not on vacation to go back and look at where I came up with these from. And the answer to that question is I took them straight from this housing opportunities, recommended strategies report that plan a metrics and. Cross key architects did in 2011 for the town and in there they included a sample. Or an example, I guess, or a proposed, um, regulation for, uh, basically inclusionary zoning. And those were the numbers they used. Um, so that's where those came from. I had said before, and I will continue to say, I'm not really confident in these bonuses. Um, I think that this is really where the meat of inclusionary zoning is. I mean, it's one thing to get, probably the easier part is to get the units. But what do we have to offer in order to make that, um, financially feasible and or interesting to developers? And that's, um, not something that I'm going to say that is my expertise. Um, so in terms, you know, I've thought through, how do we proceed, um, knowing that we perhaps don't have the right numbers in section four? Or even perhaps the right, um, the right bonus options in section four. And just to give you, um, a sense, I did go back and look at our surround, our neighboring towns. And, um, you know, there's a number of levers people pull to offer bonuses. Density is, is always one, um, or can be one. That's the one the state statutes, um, offer. Height seems to be a popular one. Building coverage, floor area ratio, parking setbacks. And then landscaped area, um, are kind of the most common ones that you see that people mess with to allow an increase in development. So that developers can recoup the cost of providing these affordable units. Um, so in terms of, here are my thoughts. I, I see three options in terms of how we move ahead, knowing at least that I'm not feeling totally confident in section four. One of them is we keep it as is, um, knowing that someone probably put some thought into it in 2011 and, and take our chances. Um, the second option is that I don't, we are not, as far as I'm aware, required by state law to require bonuses. I mean, I think it's good practice. I think it's the right thing to do, but I think we could also move forward with inclusionary zoning. Um, and take that section out for now while we do some more work on the side, possibly through our eight thirty J planning work. To figure out, to have, you know, a professional in real estate development and or architecture, figure out really what makes the most economic sense. In terms of the bonuses we offer in exchange for the units we're obtaining. Um, so that's the second option, and these are kind of extremes. And then the third option. I came up with, I was looking at Norwalk's regulation and they offer a very moderate, what I, what I consider a moderate density bonus of maybe 25 to 50% over existing density. And then give the commission a lot of discretion to play with some of these other, um, factors that may need to be played with. Uh, in terms of height, coverage, parking, landscape area, uh, and so that the, the projects can proceed. Um, but we don't have to put hard numbers in, in the regulation. Um, I think there's some issues with that. But on the positive side of that approach, what I see is that we would have the opportunity to see what works. Um, we would be giving a moderate density increase and then, you know, over time we'd say, wow, you know, we're consistently having to reduce landscape area. Or change the setbacks or increase the height or whatever it is. And then, you know, maybe in time we would know how we need to align these lovers to make the projects work. So does anyone have thoughts on which of those options we move ahead with in terms of the bonuses? Or if someone else has a better way, I'm open to that too.
Um, I have an idea, Chris. If this is clear, just for you. Would it be worth, um, the opportunity to revisit it with Glenn Schaller? Since this is like a 10 year old document that we're getting these numbers from, maybe he's been doing this with other towns in the area, maybe the success. Instead of, you know, instead of abandoning it altogether or trying it on a project by project basis, maybe see what he thinks. When we update the numbers.
Um, I, I'm fine with that. I'll defer to Lynn. I know Lynn has had some conversations with Glenn. I don't know if this topic in particular was discussed.
We didn't discuss this topic specifically, but, uh, um, I mean, he, he did give us a summary read of our potential.
But he, he found out the numbers?
Um, he didn't look into other numbers. He didn't look into other numbers, he didn't look at the stuff that we sort of hit all of our marks already. But I would agree with your view that we sort of wait on the bonuses and sort of find out later as it would be affordable housing plan that we do for 830J. And also, we might see some projects where we can see where our problems are and sort of perfect the regulations.
I would agree with Stan Radman. I mean, all those free bonuses noted, they're pretty substantial ones. Some of these projects could significantly impact the scale and size of developments to a detrimental effect, depending on what part of town or site condition, et cetera. I think why is to hold off on this. John Cris, I'll concur. I keep thinking where the car is going to go.
Yeah.
Frankly, not a lot of parking on the streets, if any. So I wonder where the vehicles will go. The idea that is providing certain amount of flexibility to the commission to say, okay, you can use option A or option B, but you can choose, we get it. So once you think about which option you're most interested in, let's have a conversation. I think providing more flexibility to the commission to make something as I think Mr. Radman suggested, it's very site-specific. The site here is not the same one as the right next door. And, you know, as I learned a long ago, each mailbox is different. I think we need to take that into consideration. So providing significant flexibility to the commission is something I would favor. Well, what, John, what if we what if we went with two ideas? One idea is don't proceed with this. So that's one idea. The second idea is, I like what Claire said, is we have a conversation with Glenn Schaller. The public, Glenn Schaller, his firm's called Planometrics, it's been working with the campaign since at least 2005, maybe longer. He's one of the premier land use consultants of the state, so he knows what's going on across the state. And then the second idea could be discussed with Glenn, you know, what could be a start allowing this with, but only with permission approval. And start conservative. So then potentially at our next meeting, we could talk about, okay, let's not go there, or let's start conservative. John Cris, I like the idea. I think it's going to be a suggestion to bring Glenn Schaller's good idea. Would like to move ahead with that. As far as timing issues, my own view is I would like to see the commission come to conclusion on this matters or rather later. And sooner is certainly not going to be this meeting, but next meeting, I think, is a goal to attempt to set for ourselves. Is Nielsen, your thoughts?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea to talk to Mr. Schaller about the previous work and get his thoughts on whether it's still relevant. And then, yeah, I mean, Lynn's open to it. I think it would be great to have a conversation about how we start conservatively with something so that we can keep this moving, as we've all pointed out, without, you know, getting ourselves into trouble that we need to then backpedal from. So I agree with that approach.
Not sure we're going to have much public input tonight. I think potentially we'll have better opportunity for input in August, maybe. I do agree with Mr. Cris. I think we can get these on the books sooner or later. And we can always amend regulations if we're trying. Commissioners, before I open to the public, any other comments?
I would just like, this is Commissioner Cassavant, I would just like to suggest that I think the discussion with other experts is a great idea, but I would prefer that we move forward, simply not offering any bonuses with the possibility that we might make it a little easier later. That would allow us to complete a regulation, have it in place, and to the extent that we were comfortable with that later on. My experience with bonuses in other construction areas is that most other communities, particularly those with a larger geographic footprint, have a variety of potential sighting locations. Because of the limited amount of space encompassed by only, for example, where there is sewer and water, we don't have a whole lot of potential building lots. My instinct here is that the bonus issue may not be as big for us as it would be in Norwalk, for example.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
This is John Cris. I would suggest that we may want to float by counsel their views on our conversation tonight, including the elimination of bonuses, and just be sure it's cohesive. Because I'd like to be sure we got all the Ts crossed and Is dotted legally and otherwise before we make a decision, which I hope
Okay. And by the way, given that we have a topic coming up, I assume Mr. Bomonte, who's a wide-branded lawyer, is listening to this conversation, so. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
There he is. Okay. Any other commissioners? Okay, let's open this up to the public, Lynn, if anyone would like to address the Republican Affordable Housing Regulations. Mr. Rucci is showing me no interest whatsoever.
I agree, you need to get going.
Okay, there you go. Mr. Rucci agrees we need to get going. Okay, let's go out. Okay, great. So thank you, Lynn. This regulatory amendment application is continued to August 31, 2021, meeting. So item number four. Deliberation, any possible action on close public hearing. So item number 1114, Bridle Path Lane, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
This is Commissioner Cassavant. I will move for approval. I believe that the plan as submitted is a sensible plan, well-engineered, consistent with the neighborhood, and a well-designed project which will add value.
Mr. Cassavant, do I have a second?
Ken Turner.
Mr. Turner, any further comments?
Yes, I'd like to say that the the new accessory structure is very well-designed for this application in the sense that it's really kind of a background building. It's very neutral. So that the overall impact and density is really not that noticeable. I think the architect has done a very good job of blending in the two structures and minimizing the site disturbance by placing it next to the existing driveway.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Other commissioners, comments on the application?
This is Krista Nielsen. I just want to say that I think this project is a good example of a way to include diversity in our housing stock by providing accessory dwelling units for elderly citizens.
Anybody else? Okay. Okay, I call a question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Mr. Cris, yes. Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Radman, yes. Mr. Tiscornia?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavant?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
Okay, the application's approved. We can now, honestly. Item number two. 50 Pine Street, do I have a motion for approval or denial? Motion to approve. Please approve, Mr. Radman.
I think it is a successful, very sensitive repurposing of one of our buildings downtown. Done appropriate way to keep one of our businesses in the downtown. Keep a vital real estate along Pine Street active and without significant impact to the overall character of the building. That's actually improving it substantially, keeping the show. I do want to also, just for the record, include a note in there about the items that both Mr. Turner and myself brought up on EDA accessibility in this space. I think they do pass some programming issues, but we don't have control over that. That's a federal mandate that they can deal with on their side with the building department. But overall, I think it's a very successful reuse and repurposing of the building.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Radman. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I've got Mrs. Tiscornia. Once again, Mr. Ward, the advantages of being live, I hear them quicker.
I defer to Ms. Tiscornia.
I'm sorry, hold on. We'll get there. Yeah, we'll get there. Tiscornia?
Just as Mr. Radman, and I would also like to ask the vision on the certification of the EDA, whether parts, one to front, one to the back, that was the condition of approval.
Okay, so that word is acceptable to you, Mr. Radman, for me to motion. I would also have to accept the vote, you, Mr. Radman. Additional condition that the app would review the town, the status of the on-street parking spot, whether
Yes, I agree. Yes. Mr. Chairman, I also know the elements agreed to have all landscape be allocated somewhere.
Mr. Radman, you comfortable with that addition?
Totally. Yes, I agree.
Okay, anybody else?
I'd just like to make, this is Dick Ward, I'd like to make the point that with the structural changes and the landscaping additions, it's going to be simply a much more attractive look for people driving along Pine Street or walking along Pine Street. And I think that's a real plus for the town.
Yeah, I completely agree with Mr. Ward, John Goodwin speaking, is one of the things that we're trying to push across all of the town is to have buildings closer to the street. Now, we're not eliminating the front drive, but we're enhancing the landscape that creates more attractive environment. We're going to have more development occurring on Pine Street later, so I think this is a good precedent as well. Okay, anybody else? Everybody good? Okay, I call a question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Cris?
Yes.
Chris Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Claire Tiscornia?
Yes.
Ben Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan?
Yes.
And Bash?
Yes.
Okay, great. Fairly unanimously. Thank you. Number five, planning subcommittee update. Ms. Nielsen, anything else you want to add on the subcommittee, sort of tackle that?
Yeah, I think we've covered it.
Okay, great. Okay, item number six. Now we got to have some fun here. Discussion on SB 1201, adult use of recreational marijuana. We've asked Nick Bomonte, who is a legal counsel. And I understand that Mr. Bomonte has done a fair amount of research into the bill. So, Mr. Bomonte, if you can give us a little more background on the bill and what our potential options are as a commission.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for everyone's sake, Nick Bomonte of Birch and Moses from the Town Attorney's Office. And that's correct. I have spent some time with the new bill, what started at least as Senate Bill 1201 and has now been codified into law effective July 1st. Or at least, a lot of it is effective July 1st as Public Act 21-1. So I'm going to try to keep this straight and to the point and just summarize what municipal authority to regulate and/or prohibit recreational marijuana here in town, what that looks like under the bill. And so if you guys have any questions, I can fill in any gaps. I will say at the outset here that this bill, like many that we have seen as of late, has a little bit of gray areas and room for interpretation. So we are still, to date, getting various insights and more guidance from the state. And we know that DCP, which is the agency tasked with state licensing for any of these new cannabis establishments, they have yet to issue or I mean, I honestly don't even know how far along they are with this, which is, they need to pass a bunch of regulations that gives a framework for how these new establishments are in fact going to apply for licenses with the state, what the state is specifically going to be looking like. So so the best that we can say at this point is that operationally, it seems like practically, we're not going to see these establishments up and running until late 2022 because there is none of that state framework for state approvals, which is a prerequisite to any of these guys actually operating. So I'll get into that a little bit more. But there's really four options that the municipalities have. Number one is do nothing. So what does that mean? Well, if we do nothing, like I said, as of July 1st, there are 11 classes of cannabis establishments under the new law that fall under the purview of this new law and are technically, in addition to consumption of recreational marijuana, these establishments, which are growers, are retailers, or are product manufacturers, or packagers, or transporters, or deliverers. They can technically start operating, except that, before they do so, like I said before, they need to get a state license. So the state license is really the holdup at this point. If we do nothing, then these establishments are treated just as any other retail use, basically. So if, I mean hypothetically, if we have no regulations on the books that address these types of establishments, depending on where they're going, if there's a retail use as of right in town, they can basically set up shop without anything ever coming before this commission. So that's what happens if we do nothing. They're basically a retail use, just like anything else. Our next option is a prohibition or restriction on the sale of marijuana by referendum. And what that would look like is 10% of the voters in town, they put a petition together, they file it with the town clerk, 60 days at least before the next regular election in November. And then the question basically gets posed to the electors, whether the sale of recreational marijuana should be prohibited or not, or limited to certain establishments. It gets, this is a little bit of a gray area here on this referendum option. What exactly would the electors be voting on? Some of the town clerks I've spoken with are scratching their heads, just like I am. The way that the new laws say that you're supposed to set up the ballot questions is a little bit confusing. So what I can say is that this referendum option would be specific to the sale of recreational marijuana, as opposed to the next two options, which actually have some more broad authority to prohibit any kind of these cannabis establishments. So, said differently, this referendum option would allow us to prevent the sale. So it would allow us to prevent a retailer from setting up shop here in town, but it wouldn't necessarily prevent us or prevent a business set up as, for example, a product packager or a product transporter. Those aren't covered by the referendum option. So to reiterate, we can do nothing. Everything's treated like a retail use. We could pass or move forward, the town residents can file this petition. or move forward, the town residents can file this petition for a referendum, which then will determine whether or not the sale is prohibited or not. And then options three and four, I'm going to lump them together because although the mechanism for getting there is different, the end result, our authority is the same. So we, and what those options are, is we could either pass a zoning text amendment or a local ordinance. And either by text amendment or local ordinance, we are able to flat out prohibit any of these 11 categories of cannabis establishments from from operating in town. We can establish restrictions on the hours of operation, on the signage for these types of establishments, and we could also establish proximity restrictions for these establishments, if we did want to allow them to certain locations like churches, schools, some armed forces facilities, locations like that. What we cannot do in in any way is prohibit the delivery or transport of recreational cannabis into or through the town. So what I mean is while we can by zoning regulation or ordinance prohibit establishments such as these dedicated transporters or delivery services, we could prohibit them from establishing their principal place of business here in town, but we cannot stop one of these transporters, let's say they're set up in a neighboring town. We can't do anything that's going to prevent them from driving through town to delivering to someone in town or transporting through town. So just just putting that out there. We we basically have the authority to prevent these establishments from setting up a place of business in town and or to prevent the retail sale of recreational marijuana in town. I mean, that's really the long and short of our options. There are some tax implications here if the town did want to allow for recreational marijuana. There's a 3% tax that would go back to the municipality. It it doesn't go into the general fund, it goes into a special fund that's earmarked for certain uses like addiction, education services, basically community outreach. So we're not talking about just your run-of-the-mill, use the money for capital improvements. There there is a dedicated purpose that that those tax dollars would be dedicated to. Come later, once we get to October, there is some additional authority that's granted to municipalities to prohibit smoking, which today specifically deals with smoking tobacco, but as of October 1st, towns will have the authority to prohibit cannabis smoking and vaping on municipal-owned or municipal-controlled property. So that's a little bit of an expansion of our town authority. But those are really our options. So I'm happy to drill down on anything, answer any questions.
Yeah, so hi, this is James Bash. Couple of questions, Mr. Bomonte. First is, in terms of the zoning text change amendments versus a local ordinance, is the local ordinance possibilities that still under the purview of planning and zoning, or would that be under the purview of town council?
Yeah, that would go to town council. There's a charter procedure that it would have to go to. So yeah, that would be outside of this commission's purview.
Okay. And then my understanding is that Greenwich and Newtown have prohibited already the sales of marijuana and having retail establishments in town for the purpose of selling marijuana. To the extent that you're familiar with the reasoning behind those prohibitions, can you tell us a little bit about it? Or in the future, maybe with with Lynn, could you pass on some verbiage or summaries of the rationale between behind their prohibition so that we can use that to potentially weigh arguments down the road?
Sure. So what I can say is, you're right, there there are some municipalities that have already just basically done a blanket prohibition for any of these establishments. At least in the towns that I deal with, that my office represents, the the thought behind that is at least for for many of these towns, is is basically to give everyone some more time. Obviously, if you pass a zoning regulation, that can then be amended later on. Some towns are taking the approach from a zoning perspective, again, to pass a moratorium on accepting any kinds of applications or issuing any sort of official approvals related to cannabis establishments. And and again, I personally am not entirely comfortable with the moratorium approach, and I could explain why, if you guys want to get into the weeds a little bit, but if 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 the town, through this commission, if this commission is inclined to do something under the the zoning authority, I would suggest it as just a straight text amendment where you're you're basically preclude, you're prohibiting any of these establishments from operating in town. You could always amend that later on, but it, again, the the point that I'm aware of, the rationale behind some of these immediate blanket prohibitions is let's get some more time so that we could see what comes out of the state as far as additional guidance, as far as regulations goes, see what some other towns are doing. And we'll we'll just take it one step at a time. It's it's brand new, so people, towns, municipalities, administrations don't want to get caught off guard. Like I said earlier, I I don't think that there's any impending or or, you know, I I don't think we're going to see any of these guys trying to set up shop, nor can they in the near future for just the practical reasons that there is no mechanism right now to get their state license that they would need to to start up. So I I think that is still a little ways off, but it it makes some sense if if the town is inclined to want to press the pause button and and possibly prohibit these establishments from operating and permanently, then it might be appropriate to pass something in the meantime that is a blanket prohibition.
Okay, last last question for now. Just again, just exploring all the options. I I am curious in terms of the referendum option. If 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 a town doesn't meet the threshold requirements for a referendum, which is, you know, I think requires something like 15% of the electorate.
It's 10.
Along with a simple, you know, along with that 15%, it has to be combined with a simple majority voting, you know, in favor of a referendum. What happens, let's say you don't get the, you don't meet the turnout threshold, does it automatically get approved? And, you know, there is as of right ability to sell marijuana if you don't meet some of those referendum requirements within the town charter?
Yes. Is the short answer. I mean, if if you don't meet these, and and actually, the referendum that I talked about, it's different than a referendum under our charter. So I I know our charter allows for a petition, I think under our charter, you're right, it's it's 15% to put a certain question, issue ordinance to vote, to referendum through the town's charter. This is different. This is a referendum that's specifically authorized through the new laws. And that is black and white. It, you need 10% of electors at least to sign their name on a petition. That has to be filed at least 60 days prior to the November election. And i- if those two, just right off the bat, those initial prerequisites aren't met, then you're stuck. The referendum's not going to work. Obviously, if you don't get a majority vote. I mean, I'll step back for a second. It's not just a the the questions that would be posed through this referendum are yes or no questions. So the questions would be, shall the sale of recreational marijuana be allowed in the town of New Canaan? Yes or no? Or shall the sale of cannabis under XYZ state license for these different, 11 different types of establishments I was talking about before? Shall the sale under these? And and we can sort of pick out which ones, depending on how the petition is framed, a resident can say, okay, well, shall the sale of cannabis under XYZ license type be allowed in New Canaan? Those are basically the questions that would be posed on this referendum. It would be a yes or no vote, and that vote then becomes the law, so to speak, a binding law that either prohibits or not recreational cannabis sale here in town. And so, yeah, like like you said before, if if that so it's not just like a majority vote for this referendum purpose, it would be, well, what does the the vote, yes or no vote, actually mean, and what what's the implication of that at the end of the day?
So just to clarify, is the 10% threshold, is that referring to turnout? Or is that referring to the minimum number of yes votes?
And so, so you need to trigger this referendum option, you need a petition filed by 10% of the electors in the municipality.
Okay, so around 13, roughly 1,350 or so, 1,400 people in in New Canaan, I believe?
Yeah, that sounds about right. So you need that that many signatures on this petition. That that's the first threshold. And then it would be, then then you're just going to tally up the yeses versus the nos, and that's going to then inform the answer. So if if we did go with a referendum, the petition was signed by at least 10%, it was filed in time, we we then have a question on the November ballot. Shall the sale of recreational marijuana be allowed in New Canaan? So then after all is said and done, people put their votes in, we count up how many yeses, how many nos, and whoever has the majority there, that that answers the question.
Got it. Thank you.
This is Dan Radman. Real quick, maybe I'm missing something, but isn't the answer right here in front of us where zoning authority institutions can, just like James mentioned, mentioned just prohibit the that type of establishment from opening, period.
Yeah, that's item number, that's option three.
Which is what we have added. Which, Mr. Chairman, John Goodwin speaking, which is essential, we have now for so-called medical marijuana, which says, no in town. And so now a bit obsolete because it's now any kind of marijuana. And so, but this commission and this wisdom has decided that that should not be sold in town. I would still, like, I don't want to put words in another commissioner's mouth, but I would think they probably want to continue that for recreational marijuana. Though my understanding on these banning of public smoking, we require us to create a smoking lounge somewhere in town and prove.
Right, so for municipalities that have a population greater than 50,000 people, the
Five zero.
Five, five zero thousand, correct. Then, yes, the the regulation or ordinance would have to designate some place in town where the smoking of recreational cannabis is permitted. And and that's something that a number of my colleagues representing different municipalities are are sort of struggling with. And I have yet to, well, again, that that specific authority doesn't take effect until October 1st, so we wouldn't have seen any any action on that, but there's there's some head scratching there as well.
So this is John Chris. So in other words, because we have fewer than 30,000, 50,000 residents in our town, doesn't apply to us, and so the commission could simply ban, I think we should say, public smoking in downtown area, which would include tobacco vaping and or marijuana, correct? We could do that?
Well, we could do that for town-owned or town-controlled property. There is zero authority for anyone to prohibit the smoking or consumption of recreational marijuana in town, period.
Example, though, sidewalks would be considered town-owned property?
Town-controlled, correct. That's that's an expansion. Whereas before, where the existing law right now allows us to prohibit smoking on town-owned property, you're correct. We we would have an expanded authority for places like sidewalks, parks.
Parks.
Or it's, you know, it's questionable whether the town actually is in fact the the title holder to certain properties.
Well, I bring this up because yeah, I was in Las Vegas not too many months ago, and you walk on the streets, you get a contact high on the east. And you know, this is, it becomes a, Denver, it becomes a public safety issue, in my in my view, that, you know, you're you're going down the street with a stroller, you're two little kids, and you get a contact high, and you're wondering whether it's safe to drive home. I think that's something that I, at least I would be very worried about, and trying to obviate that situation is something I think I'm very supportive of. So this is where I'm going with this.
Yeah, and that and that authority doesn't necessarily have to fall to this commission. I I think the way the law is is actually worded, it could, it may very, you know, I'm not sure if it even is a zoning regulation. I've I've really seen this in the context of a municipal ordinance. So if the town, I mean, typically, we see towns smoking ordinances. We don't see it through the zoning regulation. So I mean, the the commission may, this commission could presumably advocate for something like that, but and and I can confirm that, I'll I'll check on that for for this commission, but I'm pretty sure that the authority to prohibit smoking, whether it be tobacco or as of October cannabis, I think that would be through a town ordinance.
Oh, this is John Chris, and so I hear you correctly, is that this commission has the authority to prohibit the sale, manufacturer, transport, warehousing in our town.
Correct, the establishments, right, the businesses.
Town council. They would have to decide.
This is Dick Ward. Referendum process seems to me that could be expensive. A zoning regulation prohibition would seem to be a, perhaps a better way to go for the town financially.
But John Goodwin, you're, so everybody, Commissioners present, you have a copy of the Greenwich Greenwich Regulation, and it was emailed out to all the commissioners. And first thing I'll note is, to Mr. Bash's question, my planning and zoning chair rule was really driven by, let's put a prohibition in place as a way to buy time. So completely agree with Mr. Bomonte's answer there. But I would suggest, look at this Greenwich prohibition regulation, very straightforward. Although it does talk, and I don't want to get into this now because it's late, but Mr. Bomonte, it's interesting, they say delivery service or transporter, so I suggest look at that. But I think the potential model, if this commission, we wanted to go in this direction, thinking historically, what are our powers? Is it be the prohibition of sale of marijuana within town, I take a logical language there. Referendum's not our purview, and I think we're very trying to talk about people's phone where that's not our purview either.
So James Bash here, just to respond to Dick's point, I agree with everything that Commissioner Goodwin said regarding the referendum option and why it's not attractive. But the the typical cost of a referendum in town is 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 around $10,000.
Chris, I really don't see a big ground swell in this town for a referendum on the topic, so I think it's a bit of a moot point. Really falls in our court to decide.
Yeah, and and, you know, Mr. Bomonte, correct me if I'm wrong, so we as a commission in in this forum and regular meeting, can say, okay, we agree that there should be, we should propose a regulation amendment to ban, you know, within the right language, to ban the sale of marijuana, that will then go to a public hearing.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, so that that's the avenue we should consider. Now, the other good news is, as as Mr. Bomonte Now, the other good news is, as Mr. Valante points out, I mean, Greenwich, for example, I think they have it already, they jumped into it, they got it done for the reasons I talked about, Mr. Valante talked about. On the other hand, we do have time. But I have gotten a few emails about this, so it is on some people's radar. So, yeah, we could, if the commission thought we, you know, we could think about it for another month.
I think we have to, I would do it next month and have some draft, appropriate draft language.
I can do a public hearing?
Yeah, pay the public bill and have some draft language proposed, suggested by our attorneys to be sure we're saying everything properly, as you suggested.
Does anybody disagree? Mr. Valante, you have a little work to do for us.
That's okay, that's fine. I mean, this, the approach that this commission is taking is similar to the other commissions that I've dealt with thus far at least. There's sort of a sense of how the commission feels. And then my office is tasked in part at least with with developing or at least reviewing a draft that's put together by the planner. And yeah, happy to do that, happy to look, look things over and advise this commission accordingly.
Super, commissioners, before we move on, any other comments? I think we have a game. Okay, great, Mr. Valante, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone, good night.
Okay, good night. Item seven administrative actions, as I noted, see if I've looked Woodrow, will be discussed in our August meeting. Two comments at my end, one is, you'll of course get emails on this, but we're going to have a six o'clock special meeting, I guess, in August. And we're going to have either Mr. Valante or Mr. Broom or Mr. Pete's last name, or Gellerman, thank you. So we'll do about an hour on procedures. So in preparation for that, think about your questions for the lawyers. And then the second thing I've been thinking about, and we don't have to think, we don't have to give specific feedback tonight, but as, you know, you've got the concept of return to work, I guess this is the term of commission, return to presence, whatever the right term is. And Lynn and I have been talking about this. And the question is, let's, let's assume we do continue to go in the right direction despite the variance, is we have been basically paperless during COVID. And I think the question to think about is, are you fine with going, continuing to go paperless or not? My view is I like to see some, Lynn doesn't like this, but I like to see some hard copy. Now, as I thought about, as Lynn debated it, is maybe we don't necessarily have to have, you know, get an application, we get a stack of drainage reports and, you know, 10 different, you know, 10 different things. And maybe that's what we don't have to do. But perhaps on the other hand, for example, I, you know, I like having a hard copy of the Greenwich prohibition, right? I thought it was very helpful having it written on there, hard copy. So think about, you know, are you fine with continuing paperless? Or would it be helpful to, you know, perhaps on a monthly basis, plan an IFRS form? Okay, what's your, what's important to get paper? So we can talk about it next month, but unless anybody has a question.
My personal opinion, working fine, paperless, my world, it goes for a decade. Just having work, so. It's worthwhile to investigate the option of going paperless, the town council's been doing it for probably a decade now. We'll buy that, I mean, for county shooting. We can do the same or it's our own advice, or whatever makes sense. I think it's a, it'd be incredible savings of paper entries. All the amount of information that comes across our desks, which is all valuable information, all which can be digested by almost digital.
By the way, I did bring that up about a year ago. I didn't get any feedback about the type of site that I have. When are there any issues with us showing up for their offices?
There is.
There is, that's, that's, it's come up in the past, and the pushback has been that only if you've got a town device, are you able to be present in a meeting. I don't know if that still stands, given the COVID world we went through.
I think that will happen.
Yeah. Okay, but we have documents, one or two during the commission, they're not issued. You either have to print it out, assuming you have a decent printer, and somebody's saying you can't print easily, this might have bound, or you have to have an iPad or a computer. So I think there's no other way to do it. I think, I think all jurisdictions' perspectives have changed in the last 18 months as to how to do this. And we've become very nimble at doing it in terms of how things are organized on the website. That's finally the project, I think it works really well. No reason not to continue to do that, that quest.
I'm more of the dinosaur. Yeah, frankly, one thing that I do worry about, and perhaps I'm wrong, is, is I just ask myself, are people not reviewing things as much? We might use to this, because it's professional. So that's a worry I have, it's, but commissioners, doing all the homework, they think it's, but, and having to prove it wrong. But that's something.
Some of the documents are pretty, they're big, you have to scroll around, zoom in, then you have this little blurb in the document that's this big. And you try to figure out where does that go again, and it just takes a, can be awkward at times.
Any other thoughts in Zoom land? Okay, well, let's think more about it. Oh Lynn, did you have anything on your items?
No.
Okay, great. Approval of the minutes, June 29, 2021, regular meeting. Does anybody have any changes to those minutes? Can I have a motion for approval? Don't move. I have a second.
Second.
Okay, call the question, John Goodwin, I go, yes, John Chris?
Yes.
Kristen Nielsen?
Yes.
Bradman?
Yes.
Clarence Scornian?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Great, meetings adjourned, everybody have a great night, thank you very much.
Thank you.